Enjoy the background noise. And we're excited to get going. I believe that we've actually put you all on mute to start this meeting, just so you know. There will be plenty of opportunities for you to ask questions and to engage. I will, somebody's requested the closed captioning, and so I will put the closed captioning on. And we are going to be recording this webinar, so I'm noting for all of you that we will be recording this. We'll be sharing it out with the full community on our website after the webinar is over. So just making note of that. We have Stephanie Driscoll here, who is our Assistant Director and Dean of Admissions. She is going to be operating in the chat, doing her very best to capture, you know, the questions that you have and answer them as they come up. So please feel free to put your questions in the chat and she'll do her best to answer. We are going to cover a number of different things this evening, and so you might have a question about something. And I'd ask, you know, in some cases, you might want to not sort of jump the gun too much and wait to see if your question is answered by one of our upcoming slides or the topics we're going to cover. My goal is to speak with you for about 25 minutes tops. And then from there, we will sort of allow you to have an open Q and A. So with that, Ms. Driscoll, if you want to start recording, if we haven't already begun, we will get started. So my name is Beth Friedman. I am the Director of Outreach and Summer Session here at Phillips Academy. I'm so excited to talk to you. You know, I was saying, as some people joined from the waiting room, that this is a countdown moment for me. So we have 41 days until students arrive for our summer session this year. That 41 days is going to go by incredibly quickly as we get set to prepare our campus to welcome all of you. And at that point, I want to be sure that you walk onto our campus knowing what to expect, which is why we're offering this town hall this evening. There will be another set of town hall meetings right before the summer begins, so literally the day before, in case you have any last minute questions. And there will be some on-campus meetings for those of you who are in the local area. Every year, we have a meeting for day students and their families. And we also offer, because we know many lower school institute families travel with their children, we'll offer an on-campus meeting on registration day. So this is not your last chance to get your questions answered, but it is an opportunity certainly to prepare. So, you know, I always like to start these webinars by acknowledging that it can feel like a lot when you step on this campus for the first time. For those of you who are coming to Andover Summer for the first time in your lives, and you haven't been here to summer before, this might feel totally foreign and different. This might be a kind of place that feels like you just don't understand. You don't know where you're going. You don't know where the dining hall is, how to find the bathroom in your dorm. And I just want to say, you will figure it out. Those first few days are a whirlwind. And as you can see from this quote, right, people remember that it can feel intimidating. It can feel like a lot. But I think it's important to know that even though it feels intimidating and feels like a lot in the first few days, after that, it becomes like a home. And you start to figure out how and who you want to be on this campus, and we're going to help you along the way. So as intimidating as it might feel to sort of go somewhere that you've never been, this is a community and we're all here to support you. So we're going to walk through a few elements as we go through our sort of town hall this morning. So thinking about what to do to prepare before arrival, arrival and registration day. I know people have questions about health and safety, so I'll cover some of those things. We'll talk about dorms and residential life, and then we'll talk about academics, and then I'll answer your questions. So before you arrive, for the next 41 days, what are the things that you need to do? So there are really just four things, probably a few more than four in some worlds, but you know, four major ones. You need to complete your health and enrollment forms as soon as you possibly can. If you feel like engaging with me right now in these webinars, I know it can be really painful, but give me a thumbs up on your indicator if you have already submitted your health forms and your enrollment forms, because it will make me feel better that we're making some progress. Some of you out there, I know, haven't. And that's okay if you haven't completed all of your enrollment forms. And it's okay if you haven't completed your health forms, as long as what you're doing is you are striving to get them all in as soon as possible, and you are communicating with our office. I see that there's a hand. I'm not going to stop and take questions as we go, but I would encourage you to put those questions in the chat. So as you come up with questions, rather than raising your hands right now, go ahead and put them in the chat, and Ms. Driscoll will try to answer them. So especially about health and enrollment forms, those questions can all be answered by our office. Some of you have questions about the physicals needed and other documentation. Make sure you're communicating with us if you have not yet submitted your forms. Your travel form also should have already been submitted. That's incredibly important, because we need to know how you are getting here to campus. If we are giving you a ride on the Andover provided bus from Logan Airport, we need to have your name and information, your flight arrival time, and we need to know to pick you up. The worst thing I can imagine is that you don't tell us that you need the bus, and then you're wandering around Logan Airport and we leave without you. So we really want to know, how are you getting to campus? When should we expect you? We're going to make sure that you are fully prepared for your classes and afternoon activities by, one, you've already selected these, and if you haven't, that window has closed, and we're now going to select for you. So you will be placed in classes. Those of you in math classes will be taking math baseline assessment, so that we can get a sense of your math skills. And some of you will be receiving emails from your teachers, letting you know what kind of preparation to do, if there are particular supplies that you should bring. We encourage everyone to bring some sort of wireless device. Or, you know, you don't have to have a laptop or a tablet or a cell phone, but certainly it is helpful to have those, particularly if you're in a writing intensive class. It is helpful to have some sort of device to write on. You can do it all in the old school notebook way, but many of our teachers are going to be posting resources online on their Canvas pages, and they'll be sharing with you assignments online. And so we'd encourage you to come with technology that will allow you to stay connected. So if you want to sort of prep, you can contact our office again to find out if there are particular needs, but the lower school institute teachers have all been emailing out to the students in their classes with information about how best to prepare and what they need. Upper school folks, you need more sort of standard stuff. Your two-subject notebook, some pens, some highlighters, and then of course, your technology. There's, that's sort of the preparation and then you pack. We have a packing list and a frequently asked questions document on our website. So if you're wondering how to dress and want to pack, you can take a look there. I will say that it gets super hot in the dorms, super hot. But then sometimes it's New England, and so the temperature can drop and it can get chilly outside. So you are going to want to bring layers. You do not need to dress fancy, right? Nobody needs a sort of semi-formal dress gown for a dance. Our dances are informal. Our dances are supposed to be casual and fun. You do not need to pack your best suit, okay? So as you're packing, again, if you have questions, you can contact our office, but I would say put them in the chat now, and Ms. Driscoll will do her best to answer. So the next 41 days, you're really like getting yourself mentally prepared. You're getting all your things together. You're packing your stuff, and you're doing your forms. Then you make sure that we have sort of done these pieces. Before you arrive on campus, we want to make sure that you have submitted, like I said, the health and enrollment forms. The health forms really should include evidence of your COVID vaccination status. As you know, we require the initial COVID vaccine series, that two-shot series, or the most recent bivalent booster. We don't require you to have both necessarily. We encourage you to have both. We think that both of those are the best protection against COVID. However, as long as you can present documentation that you have one of the two, you should be fine. You'll be able to come on campus. We do encourage all of you to take a rapid test at home before you leave for campus. So we just don't want you to travel if you have COVID and don't know it. Last year, we caught about seven or eight folks who took their rapid tests and didn't expect to test positive, and they did. I know that we're in a very different place now as a community, and our world is in a different place, but we still encourage you to not come to campus if you're feeling sick and to take a rapid test before you leave, just to be on the safe side. Once you arrive on campus, so you're arriving on Tuesday, June 27th, right? That should be the day you arrive. You cannot arrive earlier. So unfortunately, we can't accommodate folks arriving on Sunday or Monday, have to arrive on Tuesday. And the real important steps, as I noted, are, so if you are taking the Andover bus from Logan Airport, I'm going to work actually on this slide from right to left. So if you're taking the bus from Logan Airport, first of all, you should have completed your travel form so that we know you're coming on the bus. But then, second of all, when you land in Logan, you might land at any terminal. So you need to get your luggage and then come to Terminal E. There's a shuttle bus at Logan that circulates throughout the airport. It will then bring you to Terminal E. You get off at Terminal E, and you will find Andover staff. They're going to be everywhere, all over the airport, looking for you. But the main location is Terminal E. They'll have a table. They'll have signs. They'll be there looking for you. You'll sign in, and then they will put you on the next bus up to campus. Some of you are quite young, and so you are using unaccompanied minor services. And sometimes what that means is that we need to send someone to the gate to sign for you. If that is the case, you need to notify us as soon as possible. We will have staff members at Logan Airport, but we will need to know that you need us to come to the gate to get your students. So families, please take note. If you're booking tickets for your children as unaccompanied minors, when we are receiving them, we can come greet them at the airport. Those of you who are driving to campus, or you're coming as a family and you're going to take an Uber or a Lyft or a cab, if you're being dropped off at campus, you're going to come directly to the Snyder Center. Snyder Center is our registration location. It's a huge athletic building. And there is a big new other athletic building called the Pan Center right next to it. Pan Center is a swimming and diving and dance and wrestling center. And so you will actually see as you drive by the big pools on your left. So you're going to drive past the Pan Center, park in the Pan Center parking lot, leave your luggage in your car. You do not need to drag your luggage around, and then come to registration. So making sure that you know that at registration, it will probably take between 20 and 30 minutes to get through the registration tables themselves. Sometimes the lines are worse than others. Early in the morning, our registration is open from 10:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., and we will stay open later, obviously, for those students who are coming on buses and your flights aren't arriving until later. But from 10:00 to 4:00, we will be in the Snyder Center welcoming folks. And usually, there's a big crush right at 10:00 a.m., between 10:00 and 11:00. So if you want to hold off until about noon or 1:00, we might encourage you to do so, so that you don't have to wait in such a long line. So important things about registration, again, make sure that you rapid test before you leave, just so you're not caught by surprise and don't bring COVID anywhere. But then when you get here, you'll just, we'll register you, welcome you, you'll walk through tables. You do not need to be COVID tested here on campus. We aren't doing arrival testing. And so, you know, you'll come and you'll register just as normal as you might register for any other big event. We'll be there to welcome you with balloons and signs. We'll be there to hand out your Andover Summer t-shirts and give you all the other swag that you need for the summer, and we'll also give you your folders that have important information, like your schedule and your dorm assignment, and the important phone numbers for campus, and all sorts of other information. It will have a campus map, so you don't have to worry about downloading or printing one. And it will also be the place where you get your ID and your key. So by the time you leave registration, you'll have everything you need, and we'll have people to direct you to your dorms. Most of you will end up either walking to your dorms or getting back in your car and driving to your dorms to move in. Those of you who are flying and taking the Andover shuttle bus, we will deliver your luggage to your dorm room for you. So you lucky folks get door-to-door luggage service. But the rest of you who are driving or being dropped off, you do have to haul your luggage yourself, okay? So just giving you a fair warning. Don't bring too many bags. Only five weeks. So on arrival day, oh, excuse me, so that sort of went through. So then it's this looking at, what's this health and safety approach? Sorry about that, missed slide. Important things for you all to know, COVID approach in 2023 is actually quite limited. If any of you are on this call who have been part of Andover Summer in either 2022 or 2021, you'll know that this is a quite sort of relaxed approach compared to the past few years. While we are requiring vaccinations, as I said, and we are still encouraging optional masking for those who would like to continue to mask in indoor spaces, we are only going to test for those displaying symptoms. We are not doing arrival or surveillance testing this year. So we'll test you if you seem sick, but we're not going to test the entire campus community. We also have an open campus this year, which is different, and I'm very excited about it. The past two years, we've had to have a closed campus with a modified quarantine. And right now, based on the public health conditions and sort of advice from our campus medical director, she's confident that we can safely enable all of you to enjoy walking out in the community as much as you'd like, meaning you can leave campus right away. You can go downtown to the stores in downtown Andover. You can get a coffee at Starbucks. You can go on field trips right away. We'll be able to renew our annual Canoeby Lake Park amusement park trip the first weekend for our ninth through 12th graders. And don't worry, lower schoolers, you will go to Canoeby Lake Park too to settle later dates. But so we'll be able to do all of our open campus elements, and we will be able to allow visitors on campus during free time. So families, I know many of you say, like, I want to visit right away. And while technically you can, we don't have a no visitors policy, I would encourage you to allow your students to settle in for a couple of weeks before you pay a visit. Sometimes it can be harder and more disruptive when families visit frequently and early than it can. So just to let folks settle in, let students start to make friends, start to develop their social lives on campus before you're popping in. We will say, though, however, so, you know, families, just note, you can only visit during free times. And we do expect you to adhere to our COVID protocols, which is our expectation is that visitors on campus are fully vaccinated. So that's our COVID approach. If someone does sort of test positive, right, because it happens, and it has happened before, it will happen again. We'll notify families right away. If you're a student who tests positive, we'll put you in isolation, meaning, you know, most likely you would stay in the Sykes Wellness Center until, if you're local, until a family member can come pick you up. If you're not local, like if you're flying here, you're going to stay with us while you have COVID. And we'll hang out in the isolation dorm. We'll bring you your meals. We'll make sure you get your work. We'll let you sort of engage with your friends via technology, but you are going to have to stay isolated because there's already the sort of requirements at this point. All of your close contacts, if they're fully vaccinated, simply have to mask. They don't have to isolate. But close contacts who have a religious or medical exemption and are not vaccinated, then they would also have to isolate. Those are our current COVID guidelines for our campus. They have served us well. We have not had any outbreaks. So we're going to continue to run by these for the duration of the summer. We do have amazing resources on campus for health and safety. And so I did want to just draw your attention to the fact that we have a 24/7 wellness center that's staffed, overseen by two physicians. We have a staff of nursing staff who's on call, or excuse me, in person at all times, plus we have on-call support. So there's always someone there to treat any health issues. We also have psychological counselors, basically 24/7. They have regular office hours where they're in the building for drop-in visits for walk-ins or scheduled consults. And then they also have 24/7 for sort of crisis management and support. We also have a 24/7 Phillips Academy Campus Safety set of patrols. So when you arrive here, you'll see campus safety officers out and about, you know, on foot, in cars, patrolling. They are a really active presence on our campus. So in terms of health and safety, there are a number of resources for students, just to make sure that you and probably more of your families right now are feeling good about sending you off, that, you know, we take safety very seriously, and we want you to know that you're in good hands and very experienced and, you know, veteran hands in many ways. So the general, I think, takeaway is on health and safety. We have some core principles, right? If you feel sick, go to the wellness center. So students out there on this call, don't try to tough it out. If you feel sick, go to the wellness center. That's what they're there for. We don't want you, like, being sort of feeling sick in your room. That's never good. Go to the wellness center. They can help you. And don't ever worry alone. So if you're feeling concerned for yourself or for a friend, if you're struggling with emotional distress or anxiety, you can go to our psychological counselors. You can go to a house counselor, a trusted adult. So we encourage you, in terms of health and safety, to never worry alone, to always use the resources of this campus. I'm going to say this one in a very, very stringent way, and you're going to see me model this during our first all-school meeting. You've got to push the crosswalk button. You have to stop, look, and wave at the driver before you cross. When you arrive here, you'll see that there's actually a pretty, pretty large main road that cuts our campus right in half. And we have crosswalks with flashing lights, but you've got to use them. So to stay safe, make sure that you're pressing those buttons and stop, look, and wave. Carry your epi pen if you have them. Call campus safety if something feels off. Lock your rooms when you are not there, but you have to have them unlocked when you're in there. Seems weird, but just make sure, like, when you're in it, keep it unlocked in case somebody needed to get to you. And then when you leave, you lock it. And we have a safe here at Cooley House, the main summer session office, where you can lock your valuables. So if you bring a passport, if you bring cash with you, we'd encourage you not to leave that in your room, because I cannot tell you how many times people say, like, oh, I brought my passport. I just shoved it in my drawer. And then at the end of the session, when they're ready to go home and they need their passport, they can't find it. So make sure that if you have a valuable, you are bringing it to Cooley House. You can sign it in, lock it in our safe. We'll give you a safe envelope so that you have evidence that you locked it in there, and then you can come get it when the program is over. So transitioning into just what to expect for residential life and our academics, we have a few core values that really drive our program. Youth from every quarter is one of the core values of Phillips Academy, which just means the importance of drawing youth from all over the world. So many of you out there are coming to us from outside of the U.S. So many of you are coming from all corners of the U.S. itself. So it's important to note that we are drawing people all together from such different cultures and backgrounds. And in a residential setting, that can be challenging, which is why the value of relationships matter is so important as well. We're going to be bringing you together in dorms and asking you to form relationships and friendships with people who may be so different from you. You might look at them and think, we have nothing in common with that person. And the important thing about this summer, and the thing our alums tell us is the most important that they take away, is that you be open to new ideas, new experiences, and new types of people. That you come here with an open mind and an open heart, ready to really engage with people and learn about their experiences and their culture and their worldview. So it is a brief time, but it also has this major impact. So in just five weeks, I can assert that by the end of these five weeks, some of you will leave saying, I just found my best friend. Or I just haven't found a new passion that I want to study. That is what's beautiful about this experience of living and learning together, is that in such a short time, we can see trajectories really change dramatically. So this is our campus. You can see that it's large. Like I said, there's a big road that cuts down the middle, Route 28, Main Street. You'll be spending your time in all parts of the campus, from down here at Rabbit Pond all the way over to the West Quad over here. And so when you come here on the actual arrival day, I'd encourage you to spend some time wandering around campus and getting a feel for the place. We have over 700 acres. We have over 60 buildings. Many of those are faculty houses, but still, we have a lot of buildings for you to explore. So get ready to make this your home for five weeks. In terms of what to expect from dorm living, our dorms really range in size. So you can see, we have dorms that house six students, and we have dorms that house 48 students. Most of our dorms house between 30 and 40 students. So there's a good chance that many of you will be living in a dorm that has about 30 to 35 kids in it. You can live in a single, a double, or a triple room. So we make our housing assignments based on our housing forms that many of the upper schoolers are still waiting to submit, so we'll wait and see those. But we try to be intentional about how we're housing folks, but we do not honor requests. So you can't email and say, I really want to be a roommate with this person. One of the parts of this experience is to learn to engage with folks who are new, because we bring youth from every corner and relationships matter. So be ready potentially to have a roommate or two who you will meet and hopefully become really close with. One note about having roommates, it can be hard. And you might not end up being really close. You might not be best friends. You might not even like them. And that's another important lesson, how to manage interpersonal challenges and conflict. And your house counselors will help you through that in this process. I very much hope that's not the case, but the likelihood is that there will be some roommate conflict. And one of the things that you'll gain over the course of this summer is learning how to manage that. You'll have weekly dorm meetings with your full dorm and what we call dorm munches, where, you know, there's food and you get to hang out and do activities. That will happen generally on Wednesday night and on Sunday night, so that you're having a couple of touchpoints through the week. You also will have an advisor in the dorm. So one of your house counselors will be your designated advisor. And families, you will have that person's contact information so they can serve really as your point person throughout the summer. Many of you will ask questions about, like, what do I do with my laundry? So we have card-operated machines in almost every dorm. So you can buy a laundry card and then load it with money, and then you can do your own laundry. Or you can sign up for the E and R laundry service. So if you have not done that already, you can do so when you arrive on campus at registration, or you can email our office and we can get you the information. They're an outside vendor, so you have to sign up with them directly and you pay them directly. But what they do is they do a weekly pickup of laundry, and then they take it, they clean it, and they drop it off a couple days later. So we do use a geographical cluster system where our lower school institute students are all living together on the West Quad, and our upper schoolers live in the three other quads, the Flagstaff, Pine Knoll, and Abbott quads. Abbott dorms are actually not a quad. They're sort of spread out all around. But those clusters form the basis of some of the interactions with your dean. So every cluster has a dean who is assigned. That dean will be the person you go to if you're having a sort of challenge, and you're not quite sure. You don't, don't know if it's your house counselor. You don't know if it's the psychological counselor or, you know, somebody else that you want to go to. You can always go to a dean. They're around. They're going to be very visible, and they will introduce themselves to you once you actually arrive here on campus. We get a lot of questions for your dorm living about packing. So what do we provide versus what you should bring? We will provide you a set of linens and towels. So you don't have to bring a pillow. You don't have to bring sheets. You don't have to bring a towel or a washcloth. We will provide those things for you. They will be waiting in your dorm when you arrive. Every single student gets those. However, you are going to want to bring, you know, clothes, toiletries. If you plan to do your own laundry, you might want to bring some laundry detergent or just buy it when you arrive here, because we don't have that in our dorms. We have a little in our dorms, but not enough for everybody. So use that packing list on our website that I referenced before to do your packing. We will also provide fans. So like I said, it's hot, really hot. The dorms are not air-conditioned. So when you arrive, you can come to Cooley House and check out a fan for the summer, like one of those big box fans or the rotating fans, so that you can help, you know, sleep through the night and not feel super hot. If you want to bring your own fans, you certainly can. That's going to be up to you. You can also certainly buy some when you arrive, but know that you don't have to. We will provide those. There are certain things that are not allowed, right? You can't buy your own air conditioner and plug that in in your room. As much as I wish I could say yes, that's not acceptable for our power grid. You can't, like, bring a mini fridge and put it in your room. There are kitchen facilities in every dorm, and there's a shared fridge. So now you just have to get good at labeling your stuff so that other people don't take it. Make sure that you also, when you're packing, I think, think about, really, again, what is it that you need and must have versus what do you just want, and it's maybe cluttering, because it's only five weeks. So try not to overpack. We do live, again, five-minute walk down the street from a CBS, about a 10-minute walk from a Whole Foods. So you can get all the things that you would need for a five weeks of living here. You also don't even need to bring food, because we have an amazing dining hall. So noting all of that for you. The last thing I want to say about dorm living is that this year, for our ninth through 12th graders, we do offer an all- The last thing I want to say about dorm living is that, um, this year for our ninth through twelfth graders, we do offer an all gender dorm. Um, it's part of the housing application. If you are interested in being part of that dorm, you can apply, you can indicate your desire or your need for that dorm. Um, but, uh, Ms. Driscoll is managing that process now, and so the application should be in soon in order for us to move forward with populating that dorm. So, um, in addition to the, the sort of dorm living, there's also just general fun that we try to build in. Uh, so as students, three times a week, you'll have afternoon activities. So the sport that you chose. Um, we'll have a first meeting that first week and then that will really kick off in earnest the second week of the program. We'll have open activities which are like drop in clubs that you can join, um, affinity groups for students based on their identity as well as just. Clubs of interest. So if you love drawing and painting, uh, or ceramics, then you're not taking one of those classes. There might be a club opportunity for you to engage with those. We'll have a number of campus wide fun events. Uh, so on fourth of July, we do have classes that morning. But we also have a field day that afternoon and then a big cookout that evening. Um, we will have a range of sort of all school and high school only meetings. Um, we, the reason we have high school only meetings is that they happen while our lower school institute is off campus on their field trips. Um, we also have often been able to offer author readings, um, an open observatory in the evenings. Artist and residence events through our Addison Gallery of American Art. So we have a lot of opportunities for you to engage with one another on campus. And so we'd encourage you to take advantage of those. Um, on campus fun, we also offer for those students in the Monday, uh, or excuse me, in the ninth grade academy and LSI programs events. So Monday night, uh, we have social activities for our ninth grade academy students. Tuesday nights, we have them for our lower school students. And then on Saturdays, we have campus wide events that we will offer. Um, so sometimes they're on campus fun like dances or. Blacklight mini golf or the giant video game screens where they set up like twelve screens in our Snyder Center. Uh, but we try to bring activities on Saturday nights that'll, um, keep everyone entertained. We also offer opportunities for off campus fun. So college trips and visits on Wednesdays for our upper school students. Um, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, we have fun trips to the beach or to Boston, shopping to amusement parks. So there will be opportunities for you to sign up for those once you arrive on campus. Um, lower school students, some of those fun events are actually forced fun, like we're going to mandate that you go on them and some of them will be optional. So when you get your schedule, you'll be able to see the difference, what's required versus what is optional for you. Something else that's not on these that should be is that twice a week, we have what we call Pareski Late Night. Which is in our dining hall just before sign in, they open up and they sort of put out a whole range of. Probably not so great for us, but very delicious food, you know, everything from homemade whoopee pies to like a french fry and toppings bar. And so you can stop there on the way home from study hours, uh, grab some food and then hang out a little bit with your friends before going back to the dorms. Um, the last thing, and really in some ways it should be first, since the whole point of this program is academics, right? This is an academic enrichment program, but to talk and think about our academic program, I did want to identify a couple of, again, core values driving it. Knowledge and goodness. That is, you know, the, the essence of a Phillips Academy experience in both the regular and the summer session. Um, and in the summer, we describe our philosophy as most fun, biggest challenge. We want you to leave having had an amazing time learning, but having had your butt sort of kicked doing it. It should be hard. You should work really hard, but it should also be the kind of hard that feels fun in the end. So I'm not going to go into too much detail because there are so many different programs. We actually have six different programs running on our campus. Each of which has a slightly different daily schedule and a slightly different academic focus. But what's important for you to know is that all of you will have roughly three hours of class time daily. Classes do run Monday through Saturday. Like I mentioned before, lower schoolers, there are times when you're going to be off campus for field trips. That's generally on Wednesdays. You'll have Wednesday field trips where you're out all day, um, on sort of onsite doing something fun and connected to your, your content. Our high schoolers on Wednesdays have an adjusted schedule regardless of program to accommodate our high school meeting. It also includes what we call a conference period that day so that you can drop in and get extra support. Um, but almost every day you're talking about three hours of in-class time. Um, that can be supplemented for those of you who signed up to take. SSAT or SAT classes, those of you who signed up to take essential study skills or music lessons. All of that happens outside in addition to your three hours of class time. You also always have evening study hours except for on Saturday night. Um, sometimes those study hours are open and you can choose where you study at any place on campus. Sometimes you have study hours in your dorm and sometimes you have an evening class period that you actually have to attend either a study hall or a formal class. All of that is going to be on your schedule when you arrive. So you know exactly where you need to be at what time. We will have student orientation the first week. So from Wednesday through Saturday, um, of the first week, you know, you arrive Tuesday. You're going to be tired from traveling. You're going to be a little overwhelmed from registration. And the next day you can just sort of, you know, sit back and start to take it all in. We're going to have a full day of orientation that Wednesday. With a variety of full group and small group meetings, there will be campus tours. There will be opportunities to do team building activities with your dorm. Um, but just know that we have plans so that the first few days of your experience are trying to, to help you acclimate to this campus. Over the course of the summer, we often get a lot of questions about grades. Um, and I, I say all the time. Summer session is not about a grade, right? It's about the experience and the learning. But I know you're also thinking about your grade. And so you will get a grade at the end of the summer. It'll be either on the Phillips Academy zero to six scale or a mastery scale. Um, some of our courses do. What we call mastery based assessment and they will give you feedback on your progress towards mastery of a set of core learning goals. Um, either way, whether you're on the zero to six scale or the mastery scale, you will have a midterm check in with your advisor. Um, and you'll get an end of session report, which gives you your final grade and a set of narrative comments that you can then. You know, use to guide your own improvement in the future. For those of you who are hoping to, you know, bring this transcript to. Uh, even maybe your school to try to appeal for credit or you want to utilize it in applications moving forward. You'll be able to download these and save them for your records. So, um. The last thing I wanted to note before I open it up to questions is that we do have lots of ways that you can reach us in the summer. The, the two best ones are by email and by phone. Um, the best way again, so many of you have already emailed summer@andover.edu. But we also have this amazing group of administrative interns who comes and they take over many of our communications in the summer. They become the central hub of information and families, most notably. If you want to give permission for your students to go off campus on a day or overnight excuse some weekend, but. You want them to be able to go spend the day with an aunt who lives in Boston. Um, the interns are the ones who will be calling you to make sure that they have the appropriate permissions and things. So you can email either of those addresses and you can always call us on the numbers below. The interns actually have extended hours. Um, they generally are open from seven AM until ten PM. So you can almost always reach somebody by calling the interns desk. Uh, I'm going to stop here because I want to turn to questions. Um, I see that there are over ninety-nine, uh, comments in the chat, which I am hopeful means that many of your questions have been answered by Ms. Driscoll. Um, but I'm going to pause here and see if you have questions, you can raise your hand and I will do my best to get through and get. To all the questions as they come up. Um, so I see a couple of folks raising their hands. So Renee. Um, I, I have you having your hand up. You've had your hand up for a while and so I'm going to see if you actually have your hand up and if so, do you want to ask you a question? Maybe not. Does anybody else have a question that wasn't answered in the chat?
I'm seriously typing bad.
Driscoll is the best. So, I mean, what's great is that, so we will again. Record this and send it out. And if you have other questions that come up, you can just email them to us. But I would encourage, and we still have twenty minutes left. Um, I talked for longer than I intended to. I'm sorry, but there's a lot that I wanted to convey. Uh, and I'm happy to answer. We'll stick around here for the next twenty minutes and we can answer whatever questions you might have. So I will say now. Since I don't see any hands, um, a huge.
Question.
Oh, yes.
So I'm going to be coming late on like the thirtieth. So how will that work, work out for me?
Great question. So there are a number of you who are arriving late. Um, and what will happen is when you arrive, so one, you have to arrange your own transportation to campus. Um, and so you can work with our office to get a list of recommended transportation providers from the airport if that's where you're coming. But you're going to come straight to our summer session office at Cooley House. And we'll sign you in, we'll register you, we will get you all of your information that you would have gotten at registration. And then we'll help you sort of get to your dorm so that you can move in. For the most part, um, you won't miss too much again, because the first few days are orientation days, so you won't miss your class. Um, you won't be too far behind at that point. Um, but we'll make sure that we capture anything you need to know. And depending on how late you arrive, you may need to meet with the deans to catch up on what you've missed.
Hi, one more question?
Yes, and then I would ask that people actually do their hands, uh, the little like hand icon because we've got Joe, Ashish and Aristotle and I want to make sure I get to them. But yes, go ahead.
Sure. Sorry, I couldn't find the head button. I, I think this is a mobile. Uh, thank you so much. Very informational. Uh, I was wondering if someone could sort of, um, capture the questions in the chat box and send this in an email later so that we can go through.
Yeah, absolutely. And we have done that in the past. Thank you for asking that.
Thank you so much.
No problem. All right. So Joe, Christine.
Uh, thank you so much. Just a quick question. You mentioned that, uh, parents could visit during free time. Must we pre-register, provide, uh, proof of vaccination or anything prior to making a visit?
Nope, you do not. Um, so we ask that you are in compliance with our, our policy, but we're going to take the honor system for you. And so if you, you know, you're going to accompany them to campus to register them, um, and then afterwards, if you want to visit. As long as you're staying on campus and not taking them off campus, you don't need to sort of pre-register. Great. Um, Ashish?
Thank you. So I have a day student coming in. I assume the registration for them is similar to what we heard for, uh, boarding, like starts on twenty seventh at Snyder?
Correct. Yeah, um, so it will and, um, you'll have, there's a, a day student FAQ document that is available at the, on our website, on the admitted students page. That actually lays out in more detail what to expect in that first week for day students. Um, because they can register on the twenty seventh. Certainly there is a day student and family meeting that we'd encourage you and them to attend. That day, um, that's at three o'clock on the twenty seventh. And then the following day, there's a set of student orientation activities and even though they're day students, we're still asking them to be involved. So there are sort of schedules available there so they can follow those.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Aristotle?
Yeah, hello. Um, so do they, when do you find out when you're, um, who you're going to have for your dorming? Like is it on that day or is it?
Yeah, it is on that day. So you, you are going to, when you arrive and register, you will get your dorm information. Um, so we'll give you your dorm assignment, your room assignment, tell you who your advisor is, and then you'll go to your dorm and that's when you'll actually meet. Your dorm mates and your roommates if you have them.
Okay. And one last question. Do, what, do they take pictures around campus, for example, on events or any other times and post them on the websites?
What, that is a great question. We certainly do. So we take pictures quite a bit, um, and use them for our social media. Um, we do certainly re- recognize that not everybody wants to be featured. And so we, um, we ask that if you don't want to be featured in photos. That you just email the office and we'll put you on the, the no photo list. Um, but also families, this is a plug to follow our social media because it gets pretty active during the summer. Um, it's a great way to sort of see what students are up to and get a taste of life in the summer by looking at the pictures.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. All right. The next, uh, hand I see is just labeled iPad, so I'm not quite sure who it is. So I'm going to ask you to unmute iPad. If not, I will move on to Alexander.
Good evening. My name is Amir. I was just, uh, I, I have a question. May please repeat. Repeat the list for what, uh, Andover summer is going to provide, what to bring and what we're not supposed to bring. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good question. So things that we provide, we provide linens, so bed linens, towels and pillow. You do not need to bring those. We provide fans. You do not need to bring those. Um, we do not provide laundry detergent. Um, but there are laundry facilities and you can sign up for the actual laundry service. Um, and then we would encourage you to bring everything else that you think you might need, clothing, toiletries, all the basics. You do not though, and I will say this again. You can certainly choose to get snacks and things in downtown Andover, but you don't need to have a ton of food in your room. Because we do provide food at all meals and we have pretty extended meal hours. So there's lots of opportunities to grab food. Question. Alexander?
Uh, hi. Uh, I just wanted to ask, what is it like in the dorm?
What is it like in the dorm? Oh, it varies. Um, so Alexander, some of our dorms, like I said, are like, almost like. Small little old houses with these sort of nooks and crannies and interesting layouts. And some of our dorms are more traditional dorms with a long hall, um, one shared bathroom with a whole bunch of, of stalls and showers and sinks. Um, so it really is going to depend on your particular dorm. One thing that all of them have in common though is every dorm has a common room, which is some sort of hangout space with comfy couches and. You know, sometimes a ping pong table or, you know, a whole bunch of board games in the side. Um, and that's usually the place where you'll congregate. Um, and then you'll also, like I said, all the dorms have sort of different setups. So some of them have suites set up. So like three rooms connected with multiple people and some of them just have a whole set of individual rooms. Um, so I, I know that doesn't really answer your question because all dorms are different. Uh, but hopefully that gives you a sense. Like you'll, you'll figure out once you get here what the setup is and the structure and where you're going to hang out and how to find yourself.
Yep, thank you.
Awesome. All right. Um, the next one I see is L Wang.
Yeah. Oh, thanks. Uh, the question I have is regarding. Let's say just taking students off campus. I think you might mention less, uh, we need to contact the interns. Is that how it gets started?
Yeah. So, um, if, uh, as a family member, you are interested in taking your child off campus. What we call that is either a day or an overnight excuse. And so there are a few steps to go through in order to get permission to take a student off campus. So the first, first thing I should say is step back. You are allowed to take your child off campus in the walkable distance of Andover without additional permissions. Because all students are always allowed to walk downtown in the walkable distance of Andover without extra permission. So if you're not putting them in a car, um, you can certainly like come take them out to dinner in downtown Ando- Andover and not need any special permission. However, if you want to take them off campus in a car, go somewhere, spend some yipping time away. You may only do those during designated times. So for lower schoolers. The only time that that can happen is on Sunday, so Saturday night and into Sunday. Um, for upper schoolers, that can happen on Wednesday afternoons. They can have a, a day excuse on Wednesdays. Or again, Saturday night into Sunday. Um, and in order to do so, the student actually needs to come into our main office and fill out a request form. Which then the interns will confirm with all of the parties involved. So they'll confirm that we have permission on file. From your original enrollment forms and then they will confirm with you if you're the one taking them off campus. And they'll also confirm with if there is a, an adult host that's hosting them. So you might say, yes, I want them to go off campus, but with my. You know, my cousin is coming to get them. So the interns will confirm verbally with you and with your, your cousin, the host. To make sure that they have appropriate permissions and that there's a responsible adult caring for them.
Okay, thanks. And Sunday, it sounds like it's mainly the main, they say free days, right?
Yeah. So, so Sunday is the main free day. That's the one day with no classes at all. And the only thing they have is that they have to be back on campus by seven thirty for their study hours.
Seven, so, oh, so there is a study hour even on Sunday evening. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Emily?
Hi, I was just wondering.
Hi, I was just wondering, um, how are dorms classified and roommates? So would I be grouped with somebody of my, of the same gender?
So most of our our dorms are single gender dorms. Um, and so, but as I mentioned, we do have an all gender dorm that, you know, students can apply into. Um, so most of our our dorms are sort of classified in a gender binary, boys or girls. Um, and we do also try to group by age. So, you know, lower school students live together, ninth grade academy students live together. Um, in the upper school, we try to group ninth and tenth graders together and then eleventh and twelfth graders together.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is the Mr. Menzies. I'm Emily's father. Just a quick question. So we plan on dropping her off. Um, on Monday mornings and spending the weekends with her in a local hotel. Would you be able to give us, uh, you know, an idea of what's surrounding the area? And what's the ideal place and what time do we have to drop her back and what time can we pick her up on Friday?
Yep, well, so it's not Friday, um, because they do have class Saturday morning. Um, and it will depend on if Emily is in the lower school institute um or in the upper school. So those are actually, that's a good question um to ask at registration. Um, once you see Emily's schedule, then you'll know exactly when she has different class and um and program expectations. Um, but generally, what we we would say is that Saturday afternoons through Sunday evening. Um, are the times that families can take students off campus. Um, and there is an in right here on campus. The Andover Inn is right here. Um, that's very easy and accessible, but obviously we're very close to Boston, so we can could find a wealth of resources around here. Um, let me see. So I see DL.
Beth?
Yeah.
We have lots of questions about the schedule, which um I've been answering. And so if you just want to sort of touch upon the expectations for day students and what their schedule will look like during the summer. And where they can maybe find more info on that.
And so, so again, I would point people towards the admitted students website. Um, the specifics of the daily schedules um vary by program, which is why it's hard for me to answer this question in a blanket way. Most day students uh will have a full course load, meaning they should plan to be here for the start of classes at eight thirty in the morning. Um, and then depending on their particular class schedule, they could stay here as late as nine thirty at night. Um, depending on if they want to spend the whole day here, including classes, afternoon activities, evening study hours, the whole thing. Um, some day students may choose to come just for their courses and leave. Um, and so they may come here from eight thirty to twelve o'clock and then be done. So I can't answer too many specifics about that, but I would encourage everyone to go to our our website, look at the admitted students pages. Um, we will make sure, and I think Stephanie, you and I, Ms. Driscoll, we can make sure that we post the latest and greatest version of this summer schedule. On those pages so that depending on your program, you can get a sense for the the sort of ebb and flow of the day.
Um, and I was going to say too, if you go on to the CourseCatalax where you originally took a look at what courses were offered this summer. All of the schedules for this summer have been updated on those as well. And so that will give you a good idea of arrival and departure times for students that are coming for the day.
So I'm conscious of the time we've got. It's six fifty-three. We probably have enough time for two or three more questions. Um, so DL, I don't know if you got your question answered?
Hi, uh, I have a couple more questions. I'm sorry. So what are some examples of clubs? And how do, how do they work? And also, what's the case with like uh music? E- even though if like you don't have like a tutor or lessons with them?
So clubs, a couple of examples that we've had in the past. So uh, meeting on Monday afternoons, we've had the karaoke club. We've had the um cardio kickboxing club. We had the anime club. We had the Beyonce fan club. Um, so it's really ranged. Uh, and in in general, we'll get a, an email early on in the session with a club catalog. Um, or an open activity catalog, because this summer we've added, you can visit the Makerspace, you can visit the Addison Gallery. You can participate in one of our identity based affinity groups. So there's really a range. Um, and so then that was one question. Tell me your second question again. Oh, music, right?
Yeah. How does music work without like a lessons or whatever?
So if you have not signed up for lessons, unfortunately, you can't access our, the music department except in the, that club time. So this summer, we are running what we're calling a jam session club. So if you want to bring in instrument and play. Um, students do have access to the music facility if you wanted to use the practice rooms, though. So if you brought your own instrument, you could utilize that. Um, but those of you who did sign up for music lessons, you'll get uh more information during the first week during orientation. There is a meeting for all students who signed up for music lessons, so you will know how your instructor is going to contact you and when your lessons will be given. And then Alejandro?
For this webinar, it's been very helpful. And just a question about the, the, you were saying, or or in the chat, it says that when we go drop off the, the. To the dining room and have something to eat with.
Oh, you're cutting out. I heard dining room, something to eat. Maybe you can put the question in the chat because unfortunately I'm not hearing you. If anybody else can hear her, please.
Hi, can you hear me there? Sorry.
Now I can, yep.
Thank you. And so I was, I I wanted to know if we can go in the dining room when we drop them off.
Yeah.
Uh, in the dining room with them to uh to eat, have something to eat and in their dorm room also to get to know the dorm room, to see where they'll be sleeping.
Yeah, absolutely. We encourage you to go to the dining hall, go into the dorm, walk through the campus. Yes, you can absolutely accompany them.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, Alexis, you're going to have the last question.
Um, are you allowed to wander the campus during like study hours?
No, such a, such a great question, um, especially when you frame it as wandering the campus. No. Um, during study hours, uh, every night you're going to sign into a place of study. So you're going to say, I'm going to the math center or I'm studying at the library or I'm studying here in the dorm. Um, and then you have to be there. You can't wander during study hours. If you are wandering during study hours, it is a a sort of concern and we will address it with the dean. Um, and then you have to sign back in before the final sign in ends at nine thirty. So you do, we always have to know where you are during those study hours. You can, however, wander the campus, right? You can wander the campus during your free times in the day as much as you'd like. You can go for a hike in the sanctuary, you can go explore our upper fields. We encourage you to take advantage of all the resources. Go to the Addison Gallery of American Art and see all the amazing stuff they have there. Go check out the construction of the new music center. Like, there is so much happening here that we'd encourage you to do. All right, well, I have really appreciated the opportunity to answer your questions. Um, uh, we will do our best to get this recording out and shared with you soon. Um, to transcribe some of these questions as well as somebody very astutely recommended. Um, and if you do have additional questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to us. We're, we're here and we want you to feel prepared. So thank you all. Have a wonderful rest of your evening and I'm going to stop sharing and stop recording. You all take care. Have a great night.